I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest, School District Number 67, Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 24th, 2012. First, we will begin with our budget hearing. May I have a call to order? May I have a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Here. And now, we begin with the budget hearing. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And I will hand it over to Mrs. Hermes, who's worked long and hard. And this is sort of the high point in the year for people in this business, which is sort of a scary thing.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. It is. And I offered to go through all 61 pages in incredible detail, but no one took me up on that. So what I'll do is cover just a few slides, giving you some information on the 2012-213, 2013 budget. Talk a little bit about the legal requirements. We do have some budget highlights, and I had to work with Andy to narrow it down to just a few, or we would've been here all night. And the budget summary, which is the actual financial numbers. Legally, the budget must be adopted by the end of the first quarter. So as our fiscal year starts July 1st, it needs to be adopted by the end of September. Prior to adoption, we must place the tentative budget on display, and it has been on display since our July Board of Education meeting. We schedule a date and time for public hearing, which is tonight. We also, you'll see in the budget hearing, will allow for public comments on the budget. And also, we need to publish in a newspaper the availability of the budget for anyone that would like to come in and see, and also to let them know that the budget hearing is scheduled for this evening. So we have done those things. On to the highlights. Budget highlights. So included in our budget for this year is a big component of technology and the continuation of our 21st century skills. This is kind of infused throughout the budget. You'll see it not only in our facilities, in our tech department, in our curriculum, but we had a lot of infrastructure enhancements, specifically on the 7-8 side of Deer Path Middle School, as we geared up for their enhanced curriculum. We did a ton of professional development. I'm not going to steal Andy's thunder, because there's going to be a report on that later this evening. Instructional support. As we continue to add technology into the classrooms, it's important that we not only provide support on the component end, on the machines and the nuts and the bolts, but also on the instructional end. And so, we were able to add two additional support staff, certified teachers, so on the support end, but it's on the instructional end. So supporting teachers in the classroom and the infusion of technology. We also have a couple of classroom technology pilots. That would include an iPad pilot, I believe, at the 3rd and 4th grade level. So some very exciting things in the area of technology, 21st century skills. Another big theme through our budget this year is extended work on the Common Core standards. Again, curriculum development, which will be covered by Dr. Hendrickson in a bit, professional growth, and then supplies and materials. So what we're seeing is an interesting trend. The more we go to cloud and electronic and technology and some of those skills that we've talked about, the less we're seeing in papers and pencils and workbooks and those type of things. We did advanced purchase and Agile Mind mathematics. This is a, Andy would be able to give you the specifics, but basically, this is a software program that we're using for mathematics. In order to leverage a discount, we did prepay on this a five, a six-year contract. So you'll see, that's in our budget this year, but then we will have a reduction in math purchases for the next few years. Also, we did, expanded our collection for nonfiction reading, really as part of the Common Core standards to have materials with some added rigor. So that's in this year's budget. On the facility side, looking at some building improvement projects, security cameras. This was a concern last year. As you know, we did have a break-in at one of our schools. Included in this year's budget is security cameras for all schools. Tile replacement at Deer Path Middle School. And we, those of you that were able to viewer attend the last meeting, heard about the tile at Deer Path. We've done some extensive work on some electrical at Everett. And also, included in the budget for this year is some sound abatement at Cherokee. So how do the numbers look when we put that all together? Very high level. And hopefully, you can see this, because I tried to make it nice and large. Our budget is out of balance this year by about $145,000. However, when you look at that in context, it's 1/4 of a percent variance from our five-year projection that we worked with when we did our negotiations this year. We're confident that this budget does keep the district in a very strong financial position. And importantly, it does allow for that continuation of building projects. If you recall, during the time's economic downturn, we really were down to only doing life safety projects. And you'll see under the capital projects budget for this year, we have $702,000 allocated for those projects. The Operations Committee this year, this past year, toured every single building, the tour like you have never seen. The ins, the outs, the, everything from the boilers to the roofs almost, were covered in these tours. And really, that was to kind of have an eye not only with our capital plan, but what is it going to look like for any of our future facility needs? So we're pleased that we're able to continue that in this year's budget. If you recall, when we placed that tentative budget on display in July, I mentioned that there was three things that we were keeping an eye on. One of them, at that time, was we were still waiting for some final enrollment numbers to kind of shake out. We had a couple of class sizes that we weren't sure which way they were going to head. Pleased to say, though, that the final enrollment and class distributions are now set, and we are able to do that within the current salary budgets that we established in July. So no changes to that. The second thing was the Deer Path Middle School tile project, which I referenced, and also the Deer Path Middle School cube project. We mentioned those in July, and at this time, we do anticipate that we will have an amended budget. Will be presented at a later point, once we have final cost estimates for those two projects. When we do an amended budget, you'll see it will follow the exact same process that we followed when we did this budget. So again, there will be a budget put on display. It would be a tentative amended budget. We will place it in the newspaper. We will have a budget hearing. It'll be on display for at least 30 days, and then the board would take action on it after that point. So very, very similar in process. When we look at the overall, you can see those are our major funds. Educational fund, obviously. 78% of our operating expenses are in the educational fund. So that is our main fund. Of those expenditures, the majority of our expenditures within that fund are for salary and benefits. We're very labor-intensive. This is what we do. You know, we work with children and we're heavy in staff. We don't produce widgets, and we don't have a lot of those type of expenses. So that wouldn't be unrealistic for an educational organization. This represents a 3.9% increase of revenues from last year, and overall, across all funds, a .53% increase in expenditures. So our expenditures have remained relatively flat. So that's why we're very confident. This is in line with our financial projections, our five-year, which we will bring back. And we do talk about that with the Finance Committee, and now it's a Joint Finance and Operations Committee. But we are very comfortable. This leaves District 67 in a very strong financial position. So I'm welcome to finish the other 57 pages, or take any questions that you may have at this point.
Jen, maybe you could comment on where the reserve ends up, at $5 million, whatever the number is, and sort of 14%, 15% of expenses, which is a good level at this point.
Right. When we look at our fund balance, we do this without early taxes. So we don't count the money that we receive in June to be spent in that year, because pretty much by the time we receive those funds, the year's, for all purposes, is over. We are probably going to hit the $6.5 million mark without including early taxes as a fund balance, and I think we'll be pushing somewhere around the 17% to 18% of operating expenses.
Jennifer, I think it's important, since we're discussing fund balance, to talk about the reasons why we have a balance, and some of the large items that are potentially liabilities that are unknown but out there. And, you know, kind of quantify, the anxiety list is kind of how we refer to it internally. But I think that if we're discussing the budget and the fund balance, we need to include the anxiety list sort of as a footnote in this discussion, because it's extremely important.
Right. At any given time, there is an anxiety list, as you do refer to it. And they include a variety of things. One, hopefully, we're, you know, we're forward-thinking enough on our capital projects and our facilities, but things do occur. You know, a few years ago, we had a unit blow on top of the roof. Probably, you know, wasn't expected, but you know, you're going to need to come in and do an emergency repair. You also have things that are in the news, you know, the pension shift. So we take a look at how realistic do we think that the school district is going to need to absorb some portion of the state currently contributed, part of the teacher's pension? Look at state funding in general. Now, we're lucky, as this district, we only receive about $420,000 in general state aid on 36 million. So 420,000 of that is money that is unrestricted from the state. So general state aid. You could, you know, use it how you see fit. The other money that we get from the state is called categorical, and the majority of that is for special ed funding. You know, there are, the state is now delayed about six months in those payments. So the initial hit on that, when they became delayed, was kind of, you know, we had to become used to it. But now, we're used to getting four in one year. We get two of the current year, and we get two that were left over from last year, and we know that we're just six months behind. Could they trim that funding? Sure. Have they done some proration? Yes. They've prorated general state aid for this year. I think it's at 89%. But thankfully for us, it's not a huge part of our budget. We also, our property taxes, of course, are capped by the property tax formula, which CPI plays the most important component of that. If you recall, when we started this economic downturn, CPI was 1/10 of 1%. So when your revenue is capped at 1/10 of 1%, and most everything else in your budget is increasing at a rate higher than that, you need a, you do need a reserve, because it's only a matter of time before the expense line are going to exceed the revenue line. So we were very proactive. The last time, it was 1/10 of 1%. I think we were ahead of the curve on that. As soon as that became known, we came in, we started, okay, what can we do? Let's start, can we freeze supplies? Can we look at doing things differently? Can we hold back in any areas? That's when we went to only doing life safety projects for our facilities. Those type of things. But could we hit another low CPI year? Sure. And we'll continue, you know, just like the state situation, we try to take and keep abreast of those as we can. But they all exist on the anxiety list. Your list might be longer. I can't think of what, interest earnings is probably on your list.
Yeah, interest earnings is there.
Or lack thereof.
Yeah.
You know, a few years ago, you've heard us talk about it wouldn't be uncommon that we would make, you know, $800,000 to $1 million in interest earnings, where I think this year's budget may have $50,000, $60,000 tops. So that was, is pretty much lost revenue to the district. Hopefully, those interest rates will bounce back, but certainly, in our projections, in the short term, we don't have them going anywhere. So if they do, that's fantastic.
And capital expenditures are lumpy as well. And we really haven't had a major wave of capital expenditures or investments in 10 years or so. So that's something we have to keep an eye on, you know, items like the cube and other true, you know, value-added capital investments. You know, we have to have money for that. Maintenance has been kept up, but I'm talking about, you know, improvements.
Yeah, overall, I think our buildings look great. But if you think about Project 2000, for people that remember that project, which is when all the buildings were touched, or at least portions of all the buildings were touched, is now approaching 13 years. So kind of just like your house, over time, you know, if you don't keep up on the maintenance projects, eventually, you're going to need to sink some cash into it. So we're trying to stay ahead of those, and the Operations Committee, they've really spent some time seeing some internal tours of the building, so that hopefully, you know, we can plan for those. And you're right, they kind of sometimes will spike and dip, but we try to level those out in our five-year, to determine which projects need to be done, but also, you know, you can't do everything at once. So we kind of try to place them inappropriately.
Have you made an attempt, Jen, to quantify like what the pension cost would be if the state were to pass part of it on? I know that's exactly what they would do, but...
Yeah. It's hard. We've run different scenarios. I think when we were running some of the five-year projections in the spring, we were using 6/10 of a percent, which was the information that was best known at the time, starting in 2014. Incrementally, I mean, it's not painless. You know, there's going to be an impact. So if it is going to come our way, then, you know, we would just hope for it to be laddered out as long as possible and incremental, so that we have time to adjust.
Yeah, and I think other post-employment benefits would probably be there too, on my list, on a shrinking, in a shrinking district.
Right.
Any further questions, board members? And then now, may I ask, is there any member of our audience who would have a question or a comment on the budget? Seeing none. We will actually vote on the budget in the regular board meeting. So may I have a motion to adjourn from the budget hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget hearing is adjourned. I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest, School District 67 Board of Ed meeting for Monday, September 24th, 2012. We did hold an executive session prior to this meeting, but no action was taken. And so now, we are in open session. May I have a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Pandersky?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
This brings us to the President's Report. I would like to welcome everyone who is here. It seems so long ago that we met back in July, when school was not in session, and we're so happy that, it seems that things are going well, and schools have gotten off in District 67 to a relatively quiet start. A couple of things, a few things have happened over the summer. Back on Monday, August 20th, we had a joint workshop together with District 115. And we really came to consensus around the fact that our focus needs to be working on the district vision, mission, and goals, getting back to looking at the big picture. We also shared our thoughts with Mike Simic on where we thought he should focus his energies, and came up with a few parameters with regards to that. The one, I have to quote Mr. Pandersky, who I actually think is quoting someone else, but the one thing he really likes to say, other than his anxiety list, is that there's a dance going on in the ballroom. And the dance is teaching and learning. And the board is sitting in the balcony overlooking the teaching and learning. And there's one person who traverses between the dance and the balcony, and that is the superintendent. And I think this helps us keep our focus on, the board needs to keep looking out there, where do we want to be in three years? Where do we want to be in five years? And where do we want to be in 10 years? And so, I think we're really looking forward to maintaining that focus this year. And I do know that we are, you are attempting to schedule another workshop together with District 115 to keep working on our vision, mission, and goals. In addition to that, I did have the wonderful opportunity to attend the opening breakfast for all staff on Monday, August 27th, and just got to observe the wonderful energy from all of our teachers, our administrators, our support staff. It was really just such an engaging, exciting time, and I, you could just feel that everyone was excited for the school year to begin, and now it has. And that concludes the President's Report. Now to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. Please, very pleased to report remarkably smooth start to our school year. And I was in attendance, and one of the things that is very nice to be able to do when you follow a, your board president, is to be able to quote her on smart things that she has said. And so, appreciate the opportunity to do that at that time also. I've been able to attend the curriculum, the curriculum nights at the various schools this year. I was, I have a student at Deer Path, so I was there as a parent and also as a superintendent. It's a great opportunity, a lot of positive energy in all of the buildings. And in Deer Path in particular, 7-8 side, wanted to say a particular thank you to Mr. Alvis and Mrs. White for working, doing yeoman's work to make sure that school could open on time. And if you haven't been to the west side of Deer Path Middle School, that floor makes the building look like a brand-new building. It's really worth the visit, and it wasn't without a lot of heartache and worry and hard work from a lot of people. It looks terrific. Starting to do walkthroughs in the building. Really pleased to see that Mr. Hendrickson has spent, or Dr. Hendrickson has spent so much time in our various buildings. It's an emphasis that we're placing on all of our administrators this year. I got a whopping one walkthrough in the month of August, and I'm hoping to improve that. He outdid me, I think, in the first day alone. Really impressed in the visits to our school buildings and the level of parental involvement. And somebody said, you know, if you want to know what kind of school district you have, or school building that you have, just look and see what level of parental engagement you have. We have smart and engaged parents, and I'm very happy to report smart and engaged teachers. And it's great to see everyone, and some of them are in attendance with us tonight. It's great. We have, from a, from a parent's point of view, one of the things that I can tell you moving into the community, and if you've been in the district for a while, I think it's probably easy to take, take some of it for granted. This school district has awe-inspiring programming. And the mother came in today and was interested in finding out more about our schools. And Mrs. Whipple asked her, so, you know, what are you interested in? And I said, well, I've been comparing, and one of the things that I'm seeing is, I'm really interested in a, in a smaller school with a lot of personalization as part of it. And Mrs. Whipple was happy to say, well, you found the right place. If we don't have the program, the club, or the extracurricular, and your child wants it, we will make it. And that's just sort of the attitude of the entire place. In terms of my school district goals, the goals that the board set for me, making a lot of progress on those as well, I'm happy to report. One of those is to be thinking about succession planning, developing the next cadre of leaders within the district. That is ongoing work that's occurring in formal and informal ways. Another one is to work on the teacher evaluation system, and Dr. Hendrickson will report on that tonight, and the principal evaluation system as well. Another is to collaborate with the board on the district vision and goals, goals for the year. We're well underway with those. And so, we're making steady progress on all of the goals that have been set for me, and very pleased to report that despite a minor distraction, a little east of here, earlier last week, things have gotten off to a really smooth start. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. That brings us to public participation. Is there any member of our audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move to our reports and discussion section. First, we have the new evaluation system with Dr. Andy Hendrickson.
Good evening, board members. Andy and I are going to share this report, and actually, we're going to have Dr. Shin help us out a little bit with this report. So we have a new evaluation system that all of our principals and assistant principals are subject to, coming from the Performance Evaluation Reform Act that Governor Quinn signed in 2010, and then Senate Bill 7, which is an accompanying bill. So Andy and I worked together on the principal evaluations. I'll be evaluating the principals in each of the, principals and assistant principals in each of the K4 buildings, and he'll be doing the same for Deer Path Middle School. So we, Andy and I spent many, many hours this summer on a new system where we were trained in how these principal evaluations would occur. And this is the process and the timeline that we are adhering to, and so far, we're completely on track. So on the very first day of school, a written notice of the process was required to all of our principals, which we provided. And there were specific components that had to be included, and some of those that we'll be talking about today include the components of the actual evaluation plan, and then the rubric and so forth that would be evaluating that plan. So those things are all in place. Coming up real quickly here, October 1st, each of our principals and assistant principals will have a goal-setting meeting with either myself or Andy. And in that process, we'll be looking at their entire plan and have input to the plan, as well as make sure it's based on the principal's goals from the prior year and any things that they wanted to continue on. So ongoing, where there'll be two formal observations, and then as many informal observations as we choose to participate in. Any observations are followed up to the principals with some information in writing. On February 1st, the principals themselves will complete a self-assessment, which will be part of their final evaluation, which will be completely wrapped up by March 1st. The, one of the, this evaluation for principals is not all that dissimilar to the evaluations that you've seen us as all of our administration, administrative group complete in the past. One of the unique components, perhaps though, is that there had to be a ratio of a part of the plan that specifically was looking at student achievement through growth. And we had a choice. We could make it 30% of our principal's plan, or for the first two years, go to 25%. But we, as a group, decided just to start with the 30%. So every principal and assistant principal will have something that's based on student academic growth. The state outlines specific types of assessments that can be used in these growth measures, Type 1, Type 2, and there's actually a Type 3 that doesn't apply to us. But Type 2 has to have a national norm, be a national kind of test. NWA is an example, but we have others. Our use of Ames Web is another example. Potentially, state tests could be an example as well. But we also can use Type 2 assessments, and these can be interchanged. We don't have to have a Type 1. We can have it all Type 2, or we can have a combination thereof. But there have to be two different assessment groups, meaning you have to, you could do a couple of different grades or a couple of different subjects. So there's some requirements like that that we're building into the plans. The Type 2 assessments are more local assessments, so those are things that we use district-wide. It has to go across a grade or a subject. It can't be just a teacher-prepared assessment, but it can be something from a textbook if we all agree, we agree as a district to use that across the group of a grade or a subject. And that can be teacher-made, again, but there has to be enough rigor put into that, that we all agree it could be used in those ways. So that's the 30% of the plan. I think, Andy, you're going to talk about the 70%?
Just real quick, one of the, one of the Type 2 assessments that we're creating for 5th and 6th graders that Tom Cardamon will be taking on is an assessment of the Agile Mind program that we have for over 50% of our 5th and 6th graders this year. So Tom is looking forward to helping that project be successful for us. And I'm excited that he's chosen that, because with the investment of a principal in a program, you just know that resources will be available then to make sure of its success. The 70% of the principal's evaluation will continue to be professional practices, and the state has identified six themes or standards, performance standards, for principals to follow. And much like the rubric that was created by Charlotte Danielson for the teacher evaluation program that you've seen and will see again tonight, the state has come up with a nicely-defined rubric for what is unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and excellent. rubric for what is unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and excellent performance in these six, six areas. So, I just want to highlight one. For example, the, well, that's interesting numbering, isn't it? Sorry about that. The improving teaching and learning, which should be the third standard. Principals will, will regularly assess instruction, visit classrooms, and help teachers build capacity to utilize best practices that are research-based, have academic rigor, and support learning for all students. So, that, that's the idea behind improving teaching and learning. And then, there's a page after page of ideas and what that really means. So, the principals have some wonderful guidance in this. Let's see how we numbered the next. Yeah, interesting. There are six performance standards. The six, the last one, creating and sustaining culture of high expectations, is captured with this statement. Translates the school values. The principal would translate the school's value into specific behaviors that are expected of all students and all staff. The principal would build the capacity of all staff and students to promote that consistent message about appropriate, positive behaviors and values. So, again, it's having that vision of what you want your school to be about, and helping everyone see and enact that so that it comes to life for your school. These six standards have been used in the past in our previous evaluation, so it's not, it's not a change to us. What is a change is that we can now include other student growth measures. And so, for example, and I suppose this isn't a change for all of our principals, but we could, we could include tardiness data, data on discipline referrals, social-emotional indicators, or extracurricular participation, or any other non-academic indicators of student achievement. So, for example, our assistant principals at the middle school may choose some of these because they're more directly involved in these. So, how is this different? Well, it, it's more the same than different. It's still identified needs for improvement for the principals. It's still based on school goals. It's still based on the six performance standards for school leaders. And it's still based on SMART goals. Now, for the last three or four years, our principals have been trying to create student achievement goals out of SMART goals. And SMART is specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely. And we asked Michelle Shin to come and join us for this last part to illustrate what she's been doing the last few years with an example of how she's used student achievement in her own goals, in her own evaluation. And this is then the type of model that all of our principals will, will continue to use. Courtney, I use. Option F4?
Can you read that? Yeah, kind of, sort of. Well, the nuts and bolts, I, I, I'm a measurement person, and I do like to look at data every once in a while, and it becomes very difficult to measure everything in the school. So, I think, I just chose one of the goals that I wrote. This is actually a couple of years ago, in looking at historical data and where we currently were in one of the schools. And the goal was to increase, increase the rates of improvement, performance for students performing between the 10th and the 25th percentile. So, we were looking at kids that were kind of below the average range, not necessarily students that may be eligible for intensive services, but kids that were kind of on the bubble and below district targets in reading at Sheridan. Student performance will be measured by growth on the NWA map and, and our CBM, which is part of Ames Web. So, actually, had two expectations for this group. We needed to increase the number of students meeting the MAP growth targets by 5% in the grades three and four, and increase the number of students performing at or above district grade-level targets by 50% in grades three or four. So, there were a couple of measures that we were looking at across two separate grades. Did actually meet both of these goals, and I, I won't read it verbatim, but some of the things that we do in taking a look at this is creating a culture in the buildings of actually talking about how kids are doing. I think oftentimes, we identify the groups and we talk about it, but creating that ongoing conversation with teachers and staff because really, it sounds a lot easier to just say, this is what we need to do. It's actually a lot more work to sit down with groups and really try to problem-solve with that. So, problem-solving teams that were focused on improving student outcomes. And then, related to that, it was my job to make sure the resources and the people were there to provide the support to the kids. So, it was a nice way for me to get ongoing feedback with the staff. The culture of collaboration and actually looking at outcomes to make decisions about what we do for kids. For some, for some folks, that's sometimes novel, that there are indicators and things that we need to look at with, with teaching. So, just continuing to increase the heightened sensitivity to that. And then, communication between all of the various stakeholders, even though sometimes we're within a, a building, there are programs that use different criteria to identify students or different programs, and really trying to seam that up because all of the kids work within one umbrella in the building and wanted to make sure that everybody was looking at some things through a common lens. So, that in particular is one goal with student growth. I envision that we'll be looking at some similar things across the buildings as we look at the data and, and help the principals to set some measurable goals. I've done it with culture and climate and some of the other areas, but this is in particular to student growth.
Any questions? Thanks, Michelle.
I've got a, I've got a question, and I, I know we're kind of new, for either of you.
Okay.
For either of you, how do you envision this communication, or this, this data being communicated, you know, both to us and the community? Is it sort of at the school level, you know, at the district level, the building level, right? The grade level? And I'm, and I, and I'm, I'm sure that there's debate about that, but I'd like to hear where you, where you are with that right now.
You know, being that these are the evaluations of specific people, I don't know that we'll be reporting them as outcomes for Dr. Shin or any of the principals. I think the way we'll build these evaluations into the report would be through our assessment report, to share that in the Agile Minds pilot project, we did a pre-test, and, and our goal was to get the students this far by January, February, and they ended up here. So, we might not tie that to Tom's performance in our report, but you might see that, that piece of data that we've gathered in an assessment report.
So, yeah, for, so for the, for the principal level, it makes a lot of sense to do that on the district level.
Right, exactly. Their school goal is, is hopefully a district goal as well.
Just to follow up, Jeff, at the, at the building level, I always share my building goals. I can't, I can't do this by myself. So, it's really, it's, it's my goal reflected in, in something that I think is important for the building, but really, we have to share responsibility, I think, for ensuring that kids are, are, are working toward common targets. So, we do have discussions at the building level and at the grade levels, even specific to content areas in, in our schools to kind of revisit this. And rather than waiting until the end of the year to see if we've made our targets, we, we have these conversations along the way.
Yeah, and I, I expect that because I think about what happened with tardiness four or five years ago, and that got measured, and boom, it went down just like that.
Yep. That's a really good example. Other questions?
I've always thought District 67 has really good principles. I think that's going to be interesting to, to measure and all. Eventually, this gets rolled out to teachers as well, is that correct? And what's the timeframe?
Yes, in 2016, the state para and SB7 has mandated that we'll include student achievement in teacher evaluations, probably under the same sort of model.
And for the principals that are being evaluated now, what, what's going to happen in those evaluations? Do they go in, I mean, once they're done, what, what are the sort of implications of them or?
Well, I'm sure they'll be shared, obviously Superintendent Mike Simic will be looking at them and then basing decisions and, and, you know, how we can improve on, on our performance this year.
And just my last question. For those of you who were trained in provide, doing the evaluations, what did you think of that process and all? I saw Charlotte Danielson speak a couple of times last year, and she's very impressive, but I don't know what it's like to actually go through the training process.
You know, that's a great question, Bill, and I think what we should do is answer that question with the teacher evaluation training because we can capture the, an answer better in, in that report that's about ready to come up. Good segue. So, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Maybe I'll start with answering Bill's question, which is that it was very, very rigorous and, 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 and we weren't always really happy about it, but in the end, we were very happy about the process. And we feel like we have a lot more expertise now in terms of what to look for. Very arduous, long, lengthy process, but I think the state did a really nice job as far as what they put together for us. And, and again, we feel like we're in good position now. So, I hope that answers your question. And then, so, today, I'm going to be talking about teacher evaluation, and I know that this is a topic that we've kind of regularly provided updates on. So, apology about some repetition to this presentation, but thinking these changes are significant enough that a little bit too much repetition is probably better than not enough. So, okay. First off, just a little bit of a, a reminder here. Again, related back to the principal evaluate, the principal evaluation process, there are two, two key laws, para and SB7, that also relate to this teacher evaluation changes that we're now beginning to implement. And among the key changes are, number one, we are now transitioning to a four-required evaluation rating categories, whereas in the past, we had been using three evaluation rating categories. So, kind of a key change there. Secondly, required evaluation cycles, which Dr. Hendrickson will be sharing shortly in terms of how that looks for both tenured and non-tenured teachers. And then, number three, likewise to what Dr. Cooley was sharing, there's a written notice requirement where we needed to share certain information with teachers as far as our teacher evaluation system and what it would look like and what the timelines were going to be in the processes for those. So, a lot of similarity across both of these principal and teacher evaluation. So, ultimately, our evaluation committee last year spent a good deal of time, devoted a large amount of time, looking at different possible frameworks to implement and rubrics that would, that would potentially help us to evaluate teachers with, with very clear criteria and a common language that would allow us to provide specific feedback and spark professional dialogue and growth-oriented conversations. And ultimately, we arrived upon the Charlotte Danielson Framework for Teaching Proficiency. I was also fortunate to, to see Charlotte last year and find her to be very impressive as well, like, likewise to, to Mr. Anderson, and someone who has credibility to teachers and administrators because of the model that she's created. And we'll talk about some positive features about that in a second, but there are four domains to the rubric that we decided. Those are planning and preparation, classroom environment, instruction, and professional And there are specific components within each of those with very clear, objective, you know, criteria for what would define performance in each of the categories. These are just two of the key positive features of the Charlotte Danielson Framework, and I'll add to that a couple more. The fact that this has been a research-based instrument, and there's research to support the reliability and validity of ratings was obviously a major key for us. And the fact that when these ratings are applied, they actually predict and relate very closely to student achievement, student learning. So, those are two key positive features to add to this, as well as the fact that they are aligned with the Illinois Teaching Standards, which is key, as well as our district's teaching responsibilities, and aligned very much with our philosophy, our mission and vision. We found a very close alignment, and we're fortunate with that in that regard. And then, also, it was very helpful that the training that was required by the state was actually very much geared toward the Danielson. So, we were kind of killing two birds with one stone, if you will. By, by going through this training, we were becoming very highly educated on the Charlotte Danielson Framework. So, I, I wonder about districts that are not using it. I bet they felt more like they were wasting their time, whereas I felt like I was really learning stuff that I would be applying this year, and I think we all felt that way. As far as the different modules we went through in our training, this might be a little bit difficult to read, and I apologize for that, but this was kind of a helpful graphic for me to think about. There are kind of six, six key areas that we, we worked through in our training. First was to understand the different legal changes that were happening and the, the requirements upon us as, as evaluators, as well as, as individuals who will be evaluated in this system. Second was to kind of start to plan as far as what we were going to do to meet these new requirements, collaborate, ways in which we would collaborate together with teachers and other certified staff in order to, you know, promote reflections, which is also number four, and promote, again, professionally-oriented conversations, growth-oriented conversations. And then, as well, being able to measure very clearly positive practice, as well as areas for potential improvement. And then, finally, to be able to come up with a summative rating that's, you know, very fairly and, and justly applied. And lastly, another one that'll probably be pretty difficult to read, but something we feel very positive about is the, the fact that the Danielson Framework carries with it some adult learning assumptions, which we very much agree with, that, for example, that all adults actually have a drive toward competence, and they have a drive towards continual improvement, and they want to do a great job. And we have, that's easy for us to believe here because we have amazing educators that really impress us each and every day. And then, adding to that, the idea, though, that no matter how amazing someone is, there's always some room for a little, little growth here and there. And, and that's what Charlotte Danielson believes, and that's what we believe too. So, we think that this evaluation system can help us with that. So, no matter where someone is, they can continue to grow, and the conversations that we can spark through this appraisal process will allow that to happen. Next, Dr. Hendrickson is going to start to get into a little bit more detail about the rubric itself.
So, one thing we wanted to talk about a little bit was just the idea that our district, the LFEA and the administration, work so closely together to embrace this change. This is a big scary change in many ways, as we saw Chicago Public fighting for all summer and into the fall about this change. In our district, though, we were looking at this as a way of, of helping teachers teach better. And we're really proud of our relationship with LFEA and the teacher leaders in the district to make this happen. In some ways, this is a bigger change for us than Chicago Public because our school district has had a waiver that our, our tenured teachers have not been evaluated. They've been involved each year in a goal-setting process. So, this is, this is a big change now. Tenured teachers will be evaluated in a two-year cycle. So, evaluation is ongoing, but this, in the second year, we'll call that the summative year, there'll be observations and feedback and, and more, more formal process every two years. Non-tenured and part-time teachers will continue to be evaluated every year as they have in the past. As Joe was sharing, there are four domains, planning and preparation. Information about this for the evaluation will be shared in the pre-observation conference. A teacher will come forward with the plan, and evaluator and, and the teacher will discuss how this plan best suits the needs for all learners in the classroom and measure it against the rubric that Danielson has given us. Domains two and three, classroom environment and instruction, will be assessed through the classroom observations, both the formal and informal. And then, once the observations are complete, there is a post-observation conference where evidence is shared with the teacher. Feedback is given both ways. Teacher shares how they felt the lesson went. Teacher has an opportunity to present additional evidence, and ideas are shared for improvement. And I wanted to get into just a few specifics with you. I know in your board packet, I gave you an example of the depth I know in your board packet, I gave you an example of the depth of this rubric, but for our audience, I wanted to show, share too. So, the one we've circled up here is component 1A, under planning and preparation, and there is 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E. So, 1A, demonstrating knowledge and content of instruction. A teacher's knowledge, I'm sorry, this is the excellent, this is the excellent category now, teacher's knowledge of content and, oh boy, I'm not going to be able to read that. I'm so sorry. I would say that in addition to this paraphrasing, if you look in your board packet, there is really almost a whole page on just 1A, where examples are given, critical attributes are given, and a full range of the continuum of how someone could be either doing this very well or doing this poorly. So, through, I know Dr. Shen, today with her staff after school, had a meeting where they really went through the document, not this abbreviated version, but the full one, so that teachers could begin understanding what planning for a good lesson looks like. Another example, now this is 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D, and under 2B, establishing a culture of learning, four areas there, and I probably could try to read that, but I won't try. And then, in 3C as well. Engaging students in learning, quality of work. Students are highly engaged throughout the lesson and make connections to the content, activities, and the materials. The structure and pacing of the lesson allows for student reflection and closure and technology. If it applies, is seamless and supports the instruction. So, that's what an excellent teacher would look like in an abbreviated form under engaging students in learning. This is really a well-developed product, this Danielson rubric. So, then the final domain is professional responsibilities and that actually will be shared for, throughout the two-year cycle for tenured teachers while they develop their professional responsibilities and activities. This is actually a snapshot that Joe took of the My Learning Plan, which tracks professional development of teachers. So, you can see here, this person, back in 2010-11, accumulated these various hours, the 12, 15, 3, 10, 16, in that first column, and then Reading Leadership Institute, Illinois Reading Council Conference, D67 Netbook in Service, 5th grade. And in the middle of the page there is the 2011-12 and up at the top, what that person has done already this year. So, we would look over the course of two years and you'll often see graduate work in here, as well as workshops. In addition to that, the teacher has an opportunity to share what books they've read, what groups they've joined, what committees they've represented their school in, and other activities that they've enhanced their professional development. So, then altogether, that data goes together in a summative evaluation. And I guess just to wrap it up, Joe will do that for us.
Sure, sure. So, definitely two primary purposes for any teacher evaluation system and those are to ensure the quality of teaching, first and foremost probably, and then, number two, to promote professional learning. And so, the connections with what Dr. Hendrickson was just making between some of the professional development activities that our staff are engaging in and what they're doing on a day-to-day basis in the classroom is a real key and I think it's very, very helpful that we continue to support those endeavors and our teachers do a great job of taking advantage of those opportunities. But the last thing I wanted to do, and Dr. Hendrickson did this already as well, is to highlight the great partnership that I think we had with our evaluation committee to really make these changes. And change is hard, I think that was one, that's one of the adult learning principles that I should have mentioned, change is hard, but we did it and we did it for the interests of students and LFEA in particular, our bargaining unit, just had a great partnership with us and we were focused on the same exact thing. So, Sue and Karen are actually both here and they were just tremendous, tremendous partners on this process. So, I think it's really important to say that and to acknowledge that. And then, lastly, these are the individuals who spent a lot of time on our evaluation committee last year, really going with a fine-tooth comb to what we are currently doing compared to what we, some changes that we needed to make in looking at what different districts are doing and really ultimately getting to a great result, I think. Liz Abel, Karen Clement, Sue Christensen, Karen Dolan, Chris Duncan, Andy Hendrickson, Mary Holt, myself, Julie Meadows, Katie Moorhead, Rick Riordan, Jane Swisher, Jill Van der Veer and Ingrid Wymer, both are, all gave a great deal of their time and we came together with a great result, I think. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
I do. Your written materials to the board highlight the kind of, almost a tension between measuring student achievement in a quantitative way and the development of the whole child, which has always been a very important goal in our district. And I think that's a very difficult thing to get your hands around, but when you speak to people about teachers that they've had, it seems to me that the most important thing is the inspiration, which is very difficult to measure. And you could look at things like when we put in our anonymous anti-bullying aspect on the website, if the number goes up or down, is that a good thing or a bad thing? Does it mean that the incidents have decreased or that people are just not reporting them as much? How do we propose, how do you propose to incorporate that whole child aspect of the assessment going forward and is it measurable in any way in other districts? Are they doing that?
So, how do you accurately capture all that a teacher does to help a student grow? Wow.
I guess I've answered my own question.
I've got an answer for that and that is that we will do our very best job because we'll work closely with the teachers to create the best model we can to do that. Don't have that answer now, but we'll do our best.
Thank you.
I think what you're getting at is you can't measure it or a lot of it through standardized testing and they're doing a lot of other things other than looking at how much test scores improve. Despite, but on the other hand, you have to work within state requirements, so it's a balancing act.
That's exactly right. We don't want a singular focus of our teachers. We want them to continue to develop the whole child. Well said. Okay. All right, thank you.
I guess that brings us to the Edmodo update and again, Dr. Hendrickson?
Actually, we do have one more exciting report and that's professional development, summer curriculum.
My mistake.
Well, actually, which we'll include a little bit on Edmodo, so you're right. So, summer curriculum work, let me just get this set up here. This kind of tells the big story as far as the data, but I've enlisted help tonight to give you a few specific examples. We, wow, had about the same number of projects this summer, probably just because we can't handle a certain, you know, more, but we included many, many, many more people this year. Now, I didn't really track this data in 2008, '09, and '10, but last year, we had 77 staff members involved and we were pretty proud of that. This year, we had 137 staff members involved and many of those in several projects. We had 1800 hours of work done this summer and we could put that into two categories, professional development, where we had consultants come in and help our teachers learn about Common Core, or our directors helped them learn about that, or our teachers went to workshops like the Agile Mind Conference that we hosted here at Dear Path this summer. The second category then is where we wrote curriculum, revised curriculum specifically to meet the Common Core standards that are upon us now. So, two big reasons that we spent so much more money, had so many more people involved and so many more hours of work, in a nutshell, would be, Common Core standards have changed math, science, social studies, and language arts. They've added rigor to all four of those in different ways, expected us to integrate those. And this is all really great news, but it gives us an impetus to change and our teachers grasped that emphasis and said, yes, this is good work, we want to be involved. So, those 137 people, wow, we had so many teacher leaders and I brought two of them tonight to share specific projects. Of the 30, Katie Lamberty is going to talk about her kindergarten part of the K8 mathematics curriculum revision. So, this group, we had three kindergarten teachers and Katie's going to share what they did and after she speaks, Laura Paul, who is an English Language Arts expert, 7th and 8th grade at middle school, is going to talk about how they worked on Common Core standard revisions in English Language Arts and how they're translating that to student work. So, Katie?
Like Andy said, my name's Katie Lamberty. I'm a kindergarten teacher over at Everett, but I am representing our kindergarten team and looking at that number, I just want to say how grateful we were that we had that many staff members working on our Common Core alignment this summer because it allowed for us to have a teacher from every school, which was so huge because, you know, just to have that time for each school to talk and get on the same page was, I can't even explain how amazing it was for us. But what we did in kindergarten was, we have Bridges Mathematics as our math program and it is aligned to Common Core, but what we took the time to do this summer was to go online and use the resources they provided for us and create a rigorous number corner program, which if you're not familiar with kindergarten, that is actually what we would formally call calendar time. And in the past, calendar time really just focused on what day it was, what month it is, and the pattern of the calendar pieces, but what we did is we went through and you can see, I'll turn and show you that month by month, we went through and went onto our online resources and made it so that the rigor allowed for students to create a discourse. So, no longer was it, you know, again, with our 21st century, we want it to be 80%, you know, the students and only 20% us. So, what we did is created a curriculum that was so deep that the kids were making predictions and then, the best part about these predictions is that they're in turn explaining their thinking, why they're thinking what they are. And what they do is they talk to each other, so they go knees to knees, eyes to eyes, and then, then they ask their classmates if they agree, or we say respectfully disagree, and they need to come up with their reasoning. And they're making observations and they're using their logical thinking to really explain their math. And what we're hoping is that, as you can see, we're really focusing on vocabulary, is that we're creating a base because, you know, we understand our responsibility as kindergarten teachers, that we are starting them off as these mathematicians and hopefully creating a base that takes them in the years to come where they are confident, math students with wonderful discourse to be able to explain and then, hopefully, you know, we'll see that in their later grades when they're doing their testing, they're, you know, feeling comfortable with their mathematical thinking and explaining it to others.
Katie, I have a question. So, I have observed calendar time and I think it's, and I think it's a wonderful way to trick kindergartners into learning math.
Yeah, that's why we call it number corner, right?
Right, it is. And so, can you just give an example or two of how you expand that, just to bring in the other concepts?
Yeah, I can show you. We have calendar piece, yeah, sorry. I just want to show you. What we do is, oh, sorry. Here is an example of October, which has groupings. And if you flip, Andy, if you wouldn't mind, keep flipping, there should be some colored examples. Hopefully, there it is, that page. So, what it does is it allows them to see, as you can see, it circles the fives, but what it's looking at is combinations of numbers. So, what we do is we show them for the 12, for example, we'll tell them, what is this telling us about 12? And they'll explain that, you know, it's telling us 6 and 6 makes 12, it's telling us 5, 5 and 2 makes 12, it's telling us that 10 and 2 makes 12. And again, it's just getting them to see that numbers are exciting and they're made up of, you know, they can decompose numbers and compose them in all sorts of different ways, hopefully creating that number sense that brings them through to college and after.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Laura Paul and I'm representing the middle school. We were very excited this summer when we were looking at the gap analysis to see where our curriculum lined up with the new core and I'm happy to say that we were pretty closely aligned with just a few tweaks needed here and a few additions. The areas that needed a little more tweaking were rigor, not necessarily related to novels because we do have rigorous novels, but it's more the in-depth, multiple resources that we will combine for greater discussion for the time periods and author styles, et cetera. In addition, we needed to add more nonfiction emphasis because the emphasis now is more on expository writing, as well as our newest addition, which I'm, we're all really excited about, is argument writing. So, 5th grade is opinion and then 6 through 8 will be argument, all evidence-based, making claims, counterclaims, et cetera. And one of the things that we were really excited about, as we looked for some materials to support the rigor especially, we found this series that we are really excited to share, all thematically based on the different themes from our novels, but these are developed by junior grade books, which are well-known for the great thinking. And there's four to five clusters in each one of these with essential questions and they have short stories, poems, nonfiction articles, and then opportunities for the kids to write their understanding of this. But it's all based on developing their concept of what is the voice behind Holocaust? Like right now, I'm doing a whole unit on justice and fairness and what is justice? What is fairness? And these articles have been fabulous in supporting the novels that we're reading and developing that time periods and stuff like that. So, that was the biggest emphasis that we had for the summer and that you'll see this year. Any questions?
Mrs. Paul, do you, as a language arts teacher, have the opportunity to regularly to meet with the social studies teacher on your team in order to integrate the themes? For instance, while you're reading a novel about the Holocaust, you could be learning about Eastern Europe.
Yes, it's, our novels, especially for 8th grade, are beautifully lined up with social studies. So, every novel that I'm having matches up to the time period that he's doing, so now they have richer conversations and he can add more information on the nonfiction side, et cetera. So, it's been a wonderful blend. We didn't realize just how well-integrated everything was, so.
Great to hear.
Our language arts teachers are so excited about the changes they've made, the rigor and the engagement of students with these different projects that they asked recently to have a day in November. Laura's organizing them to actually continue on and develop even more units that kids will be excited about, so kudos. Lastly, the other big reason that we had so many more people involved, so many hours spent, was professional development of the change that we made from EdLine in Dear Path to Edmodo. And I hope that parents listening and those of you that have Dear Path students have already seen some of the advantages that our teachers have been raving about last spring and the summer as they went through the training. So, most of our Dear Path teachers went through a two-and-a-half to three-hour training of how to use, how to take advantage of Edmodo and, you know, we're excited to see how that develops this year. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very informative and I think from my perspective, it really helps to hear you as teachers explain what's going on, so, thank you. Then, do we have more information on the Edmodo? Is that where we at the Edmodo update? Are we? Okay. Thank you. This brings us to our board committee reports and there has been a change in the organization of our committees. In the past, we had three standing committees of the board and what we have done is, in talking to Mr. Simic, decided to combine the finance and operations committees to remove some redundancy because so often, for instance, if we were talking about a project like the Cube, first, we would talk about it with the operations, I mean, the seeds of these ideas begin in the education committee, but when we looked at the operations and finance committee, there was a lot of redundant time in terms of explaining the project and it details in terms of the operations committee and then having it go to the finance committee and having to go over and then having it go to the finance committee and having to go over those things again in terms of talking about how to pay for those items and what their cost would be. So they have been combined and what that has done is put three board members now on each committee. And in addition, then we have the community members from both the finance and operations committees have come together. So that does make for a rather large committee at this point in time. But we feel that we wanted to keep everyone because we do have such valuable community volunteers. And as time progresses, one of our volunteers on the operations committee, Dr. Richard Lee, has already moved out of town. So there will be some attrition there and then we will again begin recruiting new members. So let's start first with the board education committee with Leslie Fisher, Bill Anderson, and Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Julia. We do have an additional member, as Julia said. One of our board members has joined us, Rick Schuler. We are happy to have you now on the education committee. And Rick joined us for the first time on, at our meeting, which occurred this past Tuesday, September 18th, right here at Lake Forest High School, West Campus. In addition to Rick, Bill Anderson was with alongside myself. And Dr. Andy Henrickson, Michelle Shin, and Michael Simic represented the administration. While Amy Lazarato and Roger Kwan were present, these are the District 67 parents and community members who were also on our committee last year and were happy that they've rejoined us this year. My job tonight is pretty easy as most of the reports brought to the education committee involve teacher evaluation, principal evaluation, professional development and summer curriculum, and Edmodo update. And tonight I can ensure you that the presentations given here were much more eloquent than I could possibly begin to give you. So I'm very thankful to administrators and teachers for being present at this meeting to explain them to us and for being here tonight. Thank you. Just two things I wanted to touch on. It's been mentioned several times tonight, the Cube, C3, whatever you want to call it. For those of you who were in attendance at these meetings last year, this is familiar to you. For those of you, and I see a few new faces, who were not, the Cube or C3, and one day maybe we'll come to agreement on what we're going to call this, is a space that we are in the process, we have been in the process of designing it. And it is going to be at the DPM East Campus and it is going to be on the easternmost corner of that campus. C3 stands for communication, collaboration, and creativity. This is a space right now that is allocated primarily for time zone field trips, which is used very sporadically at this point. And the idea coming from both teachers and students, wouldn't it be nice to have a more current technologically, 21st century-based area where we as students can collaborate, whether in an open forum, using green screens, collaborating in a whole class environment, doing presentations in a more creative manner, really to give students and teachers more freedom and more creativity in the way they are teaching and learning things. Also, there's talk of perhaps having some type of like a genius bar where staff members and students alike, because a lot of times the students know more than the staff members, can help kids with whether it's their netbooks, things like that. As of right now, we are hoping to see the final plans in October on the C3, the Cube. And the wonderful thing is that construction can occur during the school year on the far eastern side of DPM without causing a safety hazard and without causing much disruption to learning. So this is a plus. We also had an update on the District 67 website from Superintendent Simic. It was visited last year by our education committee. We feel and we are hoping for a revamping of our website, which we have of course discussed with Mrs. Wippel, who will be very helpful as we move forward with that. But at this point, while Superintendent Mike Simic shared his vision for revamping our communications, we discussed that the process will first include defining and illustrating our brand and striving to accurately reflect the values that unify us. Then we will build our communications around it. And various school and community stakeholders will be involved in this process. So a very thoughtful process. I know the education committee is looking forward to being a part of it. In additional news, NWEA tests will now be taken in the fall of each school year. And I believe almost everyone has taken them already, as opposed to taking them biannually. They will be used as a tool by classroom teachers in order to gauge where students are as they enter the classroom in the fall. Therefore, teachers can tweak lessons and skills needing to be emphasized based on these test results. Do Bill or Rick want to add anything?
No.
Okay. All right, then. The next meeting is scheduled for November 13th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to the newly combined Board Finance and Operations Committee with Lori Rose, John Julian, and Jeff Pendersky. We never really discussed who was going to report, but.
So I guess we're going to do this as a duet tonight.
Take it away, Jeff.
And, well, this morning, the new, and I think that we're going to have to report out separately some items and then we'll get better at it over time. So I'll start the duet. So this morning, we met at eight o'clock as a joint operations and finance committee. And present were myself, John Julian, Lori Rose, Mike Borkowski, Stephanie Victor, Julia Wold, Mike Simic, Jennifer Hermes, Alan Alvis, Carol White, and Brittany Schram, CPA, who is a new addition to the staff. We were called to order about eight o'clock and approved the May minutes for the finance committee and June minutes for operations. Julia kind of set the tone for the new group and explained really what she did earlier, right? That there's a lot of overlap, redundancies, and synergies from combining the groups. And we made introductions, talked for a while. Lori, since the next item is really operations, you want to talk through it?
I'll try to cover the operations items and I'll go back to you, Jeff. So we'll get better at this. So as Jeff pointed out, Julia explained the new committee structure. And personally, I found it really valuable to have community members with financial backgrounds and sort of operations, construction-type backgrounds in the same room because different types of questions arise. And as a board member, you can consider all the types of questions and issues in one forum and venue. The example is given earlier of a project like the Cube that has an educational aspect, an operational aspect, and a financial aspect. And in projects like that, they all really have to be considered at the same time. You really can't tease it out because the concept involves all so integrally. So I found it a really valuable experience and I look forward to collaborating with my colleagues in future such meetings. Brittany Schram, who's with us tonight, reported that last year, the board approved a resolution to declare items no longer needed for the school purposed as surplus. And as such, those items could be sold, donated, or disposed of to preserve valuable storage space. The district sold items through an online auction house and generated over fourteen thousand dollars. To make the disposition more efficient, it's been recommended that we have a minor change to an existing board policy which should allow the superintendent to declare property that has an anticipated market value of less than the district's capitalization threshold and is no longer needed for school purposes as surplus, eliminating the need for board action each time. The committee endorsed the change. Basically, trying to put this in plain English, there are surplus items in our district which have residual value and by school code, we are required to go through a certain process which requires a public auction, which is noticed, open to the public, follows certain legal procedures, just as our budget meeting did earlier. And we can sell those. If we can't sell them in such an auction, we then could donate them or dispose of them. It basically eliminates ministerial items such as this coming before the board and taking a lot of time on a more regular basis. So this is a policy item that is, will be up later this evening. You'll hear more about it from our financial people. Jennifer also described the budget process, which you heard more about earlier this evening. I'll just briefly highlight some of the minor comments that we heard in the committee. Unlike this evening, we had a number of community questions and some of the topics concerned the ongoing demographic changes in the district. How does this impact the budget process long-term? The sufficiency of funds for various district purposes, which I can assure you are sufficient, as well as how there's an accounting for TIF funds in our TIF district, which is near Everett School. And the good news, the reduction in the budget for supplies, which has resulted in, if I'm using the right accounting term, sort of a surplus. So that's been rather profitable. Alan also presented a status report on the Dear Path tile project, which was alluded to earlier. We have thirty thousand square feet of tile that was replaced. And this project was completed over the summer. And our district completed a project in flooring a couple of years ago at Cherokee School. And the goal here was to really learn the lesson well and to try to make sure that project was completed during the summer with no interference of the school day and student health being an overall concern. And I'm happy to report that that was done. Unfortunately, there were some issues that arose from the abatement process, which resulted in tremendous amount of time. And I'd like to thank every district person who was involved in this, particularly our financial team and Carol White, who's not here tonight. A forensic study was required to assess the source of the problem. Recommendations were made. And repairs and change orders included unanticipated costs. At one point, the board had to have an emergency meeting this summer to approve the change orders. But as we stated earlier, the project was completed with no ongoing issues. Alan is taking the opportunity to look into possible chargebacks to various contracting parties who may have some liability. But as our superintendent pointed out earlier, the building looks beautiful. The project is completed and we opened school on time. So thank you for that. This concludes my section, Jeff.
And mine as well.
Thank you very much. Actually, John, do you have anything to add?
No, I think they covered it quite well.
I'm sorry. This brings us to our liaison reports. First, we have the North Suburban Special Education District and Jeff Pendersky.
There is no N S S E D report this evening.
I, you know, I must admit, I have been remiss. I know that Jeff has asked that we make a change in terms of who is attending the N S S E D meetings. So board members, give some thought to that. And if you are so interested, please let me know. So my apologies to Mr. Pendersky on that. We have the Illinois Association of School Boards and EdRed, Bill Anderson.
There is not a report this month. There have been a few questions about training for the Open Meeting Act. And we've spoken with them and haven't, the last time we spoke to them, the software that was required to actually do the training had not been written yet. But they said they'd have it ready soon. So I'll be checking on that.
Thank you very much. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Lori Rose.
Thank you, Julia. Our Curriculum Coordinating Committee has not yet met this year, but I'm here to offer a general appeal because we are in search of a new member. Our Andy Henrickson is coordinating this search. If you're interested, I would heartily encourage you to apply. I've served on the committee for a number of years and it's a terrific opportunity to explore educational issues, some of which are covered in the education committee, but also to dialogue with our teaching teams and really see the innovations that are considered as we go through them. For example, new writing programs. You'll have opportunity to look at the Mandarin program in closer detail, textbooks, things like that. So, you know, it is an open application process and details can be found on the website. And if you have any further questions, please contact Dr. Henrickson or myself or any other existing committee members. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Wait, one more thing. I'm so sorry, Julia. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 4th at 4:00 PM. And for those who may be interested, the committee typically meets on the first Thursday of the month at 4:00 PM in this building.
That's okay. Thank you, Lori. This brings us to the Spirit of 67 Foundation Report and myself. The Spirit held its first meeting this year on Tuesday, September 11th at 9:30 AM at West Campus. And Missy Burgers, who is the president of the Spirit, shared a few items about the history of the Spirit, which I would like to share with you. Basically, the Spirit was created by our APT to, with the sole purpose to perform fundraising for our district. She informed the board that the Spirit raises and distributes via grants over two hundred thousand dollars per year. Half of the money raised each year comes from home tour and the benefit luncheon. The other half is from family and corporate contributions. Treasurer Jenna Park reported that contributions for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2012, or basically last school year, totaled a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which was approximately ten thousand dollars less than the prior year. Basically, over the last few years, the average donation has been declining, even though we have seen an increase in the percentage of the member families who are donating. And the reason that that is important is that when Spirit board members are approaching corporate sponsors, they really like to see that more than fifty percent of our families have donated. So that has really become a major focus of the Spirit. There was a lot of discussion too. As you all know, my children have moved on from District 67 and 115. And I have a lot of friends who live in the community. But really, the Spirit looks to parents as donors. And so one of the thoughts is how can we reach out to the greater community in terms of fundraising? One other item that was observed is that for the past two years, the Spirit has not been included in the registration packet that the district sends out. And there was some desire expressed on the part of that board to try and reinstitute that. So I'm sure you will be hearing about that. Also, net revenue for the first two months of this fiscal year was forty-five thousand dollars. In addition, the Spirit did receive, not in addition, but also included in that is a ten thousand dollar donation from Granger Corporation. Many thanks to them. And again, this is why it's important to get that membership number or that donation number up to fifty percent. And that concludes the Spirit of 67 report. And then we have, are there any other reports that a board member? I will say that I did have the pleasure of attending the APT exec meeting, which was last Wednesday. It was very warm and welcoming as always and really a good way to get in touch with our parents who are very connected with our schools. And I did pass around a sheet because each board member takes a turn attending those meetings and everyone has signed up and the meetings are full. So board members, contact me if for some reason you can't make your date and I will find somebody to attend on your behalf. Now we come to our action items. And our first item is the approval of asset disposal. Jen Hermes.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. Mrs. Rose did cover this in her committee report, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on it. But really, this is just a policy change to implement on a more efficient manner of the process we followed in the spring. So it is laid out exactly in that manner. We did find it very successful. Brittany has now taken over where Beth kind of left off on this project. Trust me, we have some very interested parties, particularly over at Dear Path, watching this policy. I didn't exactly get a picture of what a bunch of computer equipment that's waiting to be disposed of looks like. So this really does help our school that we keep things kind of cleared out and cleaned up and allow them to use the space most efficiently. So this will help us do so. And I'm happy to take any questions that someone may have.
Any questions, board members? Again, this is for first reading and we did discuss this this morning in the joint finance and operations committee.
And I would add also that had sort of unanimous support in committee.
Okay, may I have a motion for the approval of the asset disposal first reading? This is a policy change.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. And now, this brings us to the adoption of the 2012 and 13 budget, and Jennifer Hermes.
Hey, board members, this is the budget hearing that we had earlier today, and we, to complete this process, what we would do is after we adopt it, we do file this budget with the City of Lake Forest, also the Regional Office of Education, and then we do upload it to the State Board of Ed, and that would complete it for this year.
Are there any further questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the 2012-13 budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the Charmed Agreement. Joe Malin.
Lynn Moore is an independent consultant with the Charm Foundation, and through our partnership agreement with the Charm Foundation, we became exposed to her years ago, and over time, we came to the conclusion that she was providing such exceptional coaching services to our Emotional Wellness Initiative, to the different groups that we have at each school, that we would actually like to supplement those services. And so, we've been doing that for a couple of years now, and this contract would be a supplement to the services that are already provided by the Charm Foundation in allowing us to have some additional coaching support, so that Lynn can coach our mentors, such as Rebecca Leifman and myself at the district level, as well as our principals and our emotional wellness teams at the school level, and provide some professional development at each school.
Any questions, board members?
I was wondering if you could explain to us, the materials indicate that there's, she also, and you said as well, she has a contract with the Charm Foundation to deliver services. Now, is that contract solely for services to students, and this is more mentoring, coaching contract?
Actually, kind of the contrary of that. Charm's focus is an adult-focused, and so, the services that she's providing through Charm tend to be adult-development-focused. Now, our aspect, our portion of the contract, we'd like to have her also working on student-focused activities as well. So, but the support that we receive through Charmed is actually adult-focused primarily.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Charmed Agreement? So moved. Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to the appointment of our local election official, Mike Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold, and with permission, I'd like to suggest that the board address Item 4 and Item 6, that is, the Election Official and the Open Meetings Act designee. Mrs. Fowler has drawn the short straw on each of those, and I'd like to appoint, recommend appointing her to each of those positions. So, the Elections Official for the district and also the Opens Meeting Act official designee.
Any questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve Eileen Fowler as our local election official and Open Meeting Act designee? So moved.
Second, and congratulations.
We need to vote first. May I, may I have a roll call vote, please? I mean, I'm sorry, may I? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion does carry unanimously, and now we can congratulate you.
Welcome.
All right. This brings us to the approval of human resources items, and Joe Malin again.
So, as there was no meeting last month, you have a pretty extensive list of individuals who were hired, also, you know, some resignations in different, you know, different HR movements that have happened, reassignments, and we're just very pleased and excited to recommend those to you today.
Do we have any questions? May I have a motion to approve the human resources items? These include hiring, resignations, terminations, medical and family leave, absences, changes in statuses, and PA 096-0434.
I move that we accept the HR proposals as proposed.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to the approval of the resignation agreement. We discussed this item in closed session. I move that the Board of Education approve the resignation agreement as discussed in executive session. May I have a second?
Second.
And may I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the SEIU contract, and Jennifer Hermes.
All right, thank you. With a lot less fanfare, we also did have another union contract that was recently settled within our community, the SEIU contract, which represents District 67's pretty much clerical, maintenance, and tech support staffs. This is kind of our non-certified staff, particularly at the building level. We have been meeting since probably early to mid-spring. We did settle on August 15th. In total, we covered 21 items, were reviewed, discussed, and eventually tentatively agreed to. This does include a comprehensive financial package. It is really wonderful. We really don't meet with this group as an entire group or even as a partial group that often. We were just coming off a five-year agreement, so the faces kind of changed a little bit on both sides, and I'm pleased to say that we did settle in another five-year agreement. The compensation package is an average of 3% a year for each employee. There are 33 members. Someone asked me that question earlier, exactly how many members of this unit there are. So, there are 33 members that this represents. So, I did include in the board's packet an updated contract with the 21 changed items. That is a draft, and we have a couple of typos and things that we still need to clean up. The union has also received a copy of this draft. They ratified the agreement, and they are okay with the actual complete contract language that we have. So, it's before the board for approval tonight, and then we'll be set in this arena for SEIU for the next five years.
Any questions, board members? Seeing none, we have discussed this contract over the past six months, I believe, or whenever we started working on it. So, I know that board members have asked a lot of questions along the way. May I have a motion to approve the SEIU contract?
I move we approve the SEIU contract.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. This brings us to our consent agenda, where we have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for July and August of 2012, as well as the July and August 2012 financial reports. We have the approval of minutes of an executive session on July 24th, 2012, a joint workshop on August 20th, 2012, minutes of a regular meeting on July 24th, 2012, and the minutes of a special meeting on August 27th, 2012. We have the disposal of audio recordings from December 14th of 2010, December 28th, 2010, and January 25th of 2011. Is there any item that a board member would like removed for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next, we have our FOIA requests. We had four FOIA requests from Lisa Black of the Chicago Tribune in Schaumburg, Illinois. We had three FOIA requests from Nancy Thorne of 331 East Blodgett in Lake Bluff, Illinois. We had one FOIA request from the North Shore Barrington Association of Realtors, and also one FOIA request from Jane Beeson. Announcements, Thursday, September 27th, is curriculum night at Deer Path West at 6:30 p.m. Monday, October 8th, is Columbus Day, no school. Friday, October 12th, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. at Lake Forest High School West Campus in the boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn? I don't think that date is correct. Yep, yep. I missed the Friday, October 12th, is Cherokee's 50th Anniversary Open House. So, there we go. Tuesday, October 23rd, is our Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. here, which is at the boardroom at West Campus. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We did that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.